All right. Welcome to the Plan and Zone Commission meeting for December 20th, 2023. Can I have the roll call, please?
Gibson. Kapler. Polcarney.
Here.
Ormsby.
Here.
Satterfield.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Winland.
Here. All right, thanks. We had minutes from the meeting of November 15th, 2003. Can I have a motion on those?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and we have a second to approve the minutes from November 15th, 2023. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved. All right. Review of commission procedures. So again, welcome to the Plan and Zone Commission for December 20th, 2023. We are a recommending body appointed by the mayor and city council to review site plans, zoning changes and such. We would love to have your input for a particular case. As I go through them, I will recognize the audience, at which point I will look for you to go to the podium that's to my right and to your left back there and give us your name and information and whatever you have to add to the case, and we'd love to hear it. We've got a little bit of a procedural twist tonight. We've got three public hearings. We have to open and close, so it'll be a little mechanical back and forth, so just bear with us as we do with that. And with that, Taylor, we will begin.
Thank you, Chairman. Our first case on the agenda is case 2385. This is a rezoning for, okay, the southeast corner of Middle Road and Forest Grove Drive. The background on this case, the applicant is John H. Venhorst Family Limited Partnership. Parcel proposal is for 11 point, a little over 11, eight point three acres to be rezoned from A1 agricultural urban reserve district to C2 community commercial district. Right now, the proposal is just commercial office, but still pending their rezoning for a future use and sale. As mentioned, the current zoning is A1. Surrounding properties not located in the TV Bank Sports Complex or I- Iron T Golf areas are also undeveloped and zoned A1. This is our first proposal for rezoning south of Forest Grove Drive, southeast really, kind of frontier. Far to the east, there's Century Heights, 25th Edition, which has, is currently being built out. There will be a buffer of undeveloped land between this proposal and the currently zoned R3 and R1 zoning. Proposal C2, as mentioned, community commercial. There are many allowed uses in this district, including that commercial office as mentioned as, and I want to reiterate, donors rezoning for future sales, so multiple options are on the table. Future land use map does, the currently adopted future land use map adopts this area's community commercial that is a compliant, the C2 is a compliant district in this land use category. I'll note some drainage way, there is a drainage way kind of designated through here, so just keep in mind that we want to see that incorporated in the developments. I wanted to put the, a draft future land use map on here since we've been working so hard on it. You'll note there's much similarity between the previous one and the draft map showing the corner for commercial, the greenways, and then transitioning it into some medium residential to the east. That is not adopted. The applicant has submitted a concept or rezoning exhibit. The rezoning concept contemplates potential commercial structure with associated parking located on the western portion of the tract. Access to any development would require the construction of a city street connecting to the roundabout Forest Grove Drive and Competition Drive, so right to the east. An additional access would be allowed on Middle Road. Near term, this would be full access. Middle Road is still a two lane, maybe a little, with a turn lane right there. In the future, this will be expanded, and at that time, it'd be right in, right out. This access would not be required to be a city street. If it's commercial, would be likely a private drive. So you can see that on this going east west, connecting Middle Road there. The eastern half of this tract has not been designated for potential use. Could be a time that'd be reviewed, platting, site planning. When a development is proposed, staff will take into consideration the likelihood of future residential development to the east. So we're thinking of buffering different uses, just having those residential next to commercial would take that into consideration during the site planning and/or platting when more information is known for the development. Many types of C2 uses, C2 use developments would work with this proposed rezoning, tract and road alignment, so staff feels comfortable with the submitted information for analyzing potential concerns, thus are recommending approval. I will note rezoning requests must adequately address seven criteria as outlined in section 111513B to meet the standard for a positive recommendation. Staff contends this request meets the requirement. The analysis for each criteria is included in the staff report for the case. Given the evidence and reasons stated in the staff analysis of the request, staff is recommending Plan and Zone Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning from A1 to C2. I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since presentation or publication?
No, nothing to add.
All right. Questions on this case from the commission, please? Okay, none from the commission. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter?
Open the public hearing. Open the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I left my cheat sheet over here. All right. This is the public hearing part. Staff report's done. Has there been proof of publication?
Yes, there has, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing for case 23085 and ask, is there any public comment for this case? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion and questions by the commission? No. All right. I would entertain a motion for this case then, in a second?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-085, subject to the staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve case 23-085, subject to staff recommendations. Can I have a roll call on the motion for the vote, please?
Kapler.
Yes.
Polcarney.
Yes.
Ormsby.
Here.
Yes.
Yes? Yes, I am here.
Satterfield.
Yes.
Stoltenberg.
Yes.
Winland.
Yes. Okay, thank you. That will take us to case 23-092.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be presenting on the next two cases. That's 23-092 and 23-093. Both of these are ordinance, text ordinance amendments, one to Title 11 and one to Title 13. All this relates to our floodplain regulations, City of Bettendorf. Kind of go, give you some context. Every so often, FEMA, that's the Federal Emergency Management Agency, is the provider of all flood maps in the United States. They issue new flood maps, which cities who participate in the National Flood Insurance Program have to adopt, or otherwise they are not allowed back in. They issue these by issuing something called flood insurance rate maps, FERMs. These are shown on the screen as these large rectangular maps, and they have numbers associated with them. The maps are updated when new models or data is available, so they have issued new maps as of October. We have until April 11th to adopt these maps through our formal process. As a local jurisdiction, part of the NFIP, we are tasked with regulating development in these areas. So our floodplain, our floodways, there's some other areas protected by the levy, for instance. The code, how the code works in our city ordinance is it references these FERM panels, and that's how the text is attached to the maps. So somewhat kind of like a zoning, but a little different. As mentioned, those new maps are required to be adopted by April 11th, 2024, so we're on track for that. On the left hand of the screen is the current map, it's just kind of, and then the right hand is these, are these pending maps that will become adopted. It's hard to tell the difference from a, this level of scale, but I'll kind of go over, just touch on some of the bases. The changes in the maps have varying results for different areas and different parcels. Overall, most areas show a decrease in floodplain area in Bettendorf. So those areas on the left map shown on the screen are in purple. So it's either a decrease in area, decrease in the base flood elevation. That's overall a summary. Some areas are showing the increase, so you'll see yellow areas. So it's either, these areas weren't mapped correctly, the elevations were, data was poor, or the flood elevation is creasing because of modeling of developments, or all there is a number of different ways that this could be the result of. Of the roughly 1,500 parcels affected by the map changes, 900 of them are only seeing decreases. So those are just parcels. Some of those parcels are owned by many people, maybe one person, varying ownership models. Those are shown on the right-hand map in red, so you're seeing a decrease overall, just a decrease. So they're not being, they're being, if you're a landowner, you'd be positively impacted by this from an insurance perspective. Others are showing increases, a mix of increases and/or increases and decreases, or all increases. And those are shown in blue. So certain, you can kind of see certain watersheds are being modeled a little differently. Spencer Creek to the north, we have Crow Creek as well. So it's just kind of trying to show you how the code changes, how the map changes are affecting real estate, property owners and residents overall. The formal adoption process requires text updates to Title 13 of our flood control ordinance. That's a separate standalone ordinance in our city code. So we are recommending to repeal and replace with the new ordinance. It references the new FERM panels, has some slight definition changes, which are based off of Iowa Department of Natural Resources' model flood language. We also have a section of our zoning ordinance, which does the same exact thing, and it's a flood overlay. It's from when we used to not have a standalone ordinance. It's just kind of been repeated from past flood updates. Instead of having two complete copies of the floodplain ordinance in our code, staff is recommending removing the overlay ordinance, which is in our Title 1161, referenced in Title 1161 and contained in 1162, and then just having the standalone ordinance by itself. The DNR has given us advice on this. Either having one or the other, both is, in all honesty, confusing and creates errors for administration. So having said that, the staff is recommending approval of the updating our Title 13 to reference these new FERM panels, and will be compliant with the National Flood Insurance Program. And then also amending the Title 116162 to remove the flood overlay district. We'll still have the same exact enforcement power. Pretty much, it won't change administratively, it won't change anything. It's just located in a different section of our code. I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, no updates there?
No updates, and we're really handcuffed. If we don't adopt this, then we're in violation of the National Flood Insurance Program, which would be a very bad thing. I would just note that we're seeing a reduction in floodway in the city. There's maybe reasons for that, better mapping, better modeling, also maybe some better stormwater control. So it's, it's a good thing that what's happening with the flood maps, for the most part. We're seeing less floodway in the city. That means less areas that are not developable.
Good, thanks. Okay, this is another one where we have a public hearing. Do we have proof of publication for case 23-092?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public comment for case 23-092, anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right, I'll come back and close the public hearing. Discussion and questions by the commissioner's staff?
I was just, out of curiosity, for the people whose properties it is affecting, how do we, how are they notified?
So, I can answer that. So FEMA has, does not require notification individually. There's a number of ways. There's been some publications announcing this. This, the start of this whole process actually was over two years ago. And then the maps, map revisions were delayed, delayed, delayed for a number of reasons. This is one way we're trying to notify. We're only the regulators. We cannot change the maps. We can't even apply to change the maps. An individual property owner would, could go through and hire a surveyor, go through a Loma, a letter of map amendment to see if they could, maybe their elevation's wrong on their base, on their floor. So there is processes we can assist them with. Some of these properties are ag land, they probably won't notice, but we're trying to take like the top-down approach, and we're not, we're not sending out notifications to the whole city individually, so we're happy to take any questions, but this is a form of our outreach right now.
Okay, thank you.
Taylor, the map you've got up now, the one that's on the right with the red and green and that on it, so the red, or sorry, the blue, the blue, there's, they're mostly boxes and shapes as opposed to, I'll call them blobs or irregular shapes. Why are those more bigger blocks of area?
So those are just parcels. So, so you'll see, this is a very zoomed out map, but some of those large parcels might be parks. I mean, there's no, all parcels were considered. In fact, I can see Crow Creek Parks on this map right now.
That whole section north of I-80.
Yep, those are, there's, that's Spencer Creek watershed right there, so they're not developed. Parcels, they haven't gone through a subdivision. When a subdivision occurs on parcels such as that, we, by city code, require floodway to be separated in an outlot for this reason. So, because when insurance adjusts, or when insurance companies or mortgage lenders look at these and they see floodplain, floodway or floodplain on your lot, sometimes they force you to prove you're not in the floodplain, and you have to go get that surveyor, go through those steps. So we try to take a more proactive approach, and either separate it to an outlot, and then that big blue box becomes much narrower, and it's confined. Now, it doesn't prevent from a future map update for those lines to change, and we see that a lot. Some of the developments will have to maybe amend their outlots or different various methods, but that's really what you're seeing.
Okay.
Parks, greenways, outlots, which are larger tracts. If you take a look at the Duck Creek watershed, the west end of town, those are many, many small residential parcels.
Okay.
That are being reduced. So that doesn't mean it's being eliminated, just reduced. And there are areas where this map, the map is not going to revise the panels. The one in particular is our downtown area due to its, the levy, there's many more steps to revise that flood map.
Okay.
Levy certification through the Corps of Engineers, so yeah, it's kind of a multilayered answer.
Great, thank you. Other questions or comments regarding this case?
I do have a question, and I know we're looking at the big scope of the regulations, but there's a couple of cases that come to mind that we've discussed over the last few years that would be impacted by this, and we've talked about how the floodway would be changing. So I'm just wondering, the new apartments on Devil's Glen Road.
Correct.
The parcel that we've talked about over and over and over again out by the Quartet, and the parcel on Kimberly Road behind Thomas Place and the Nail Bar, Q Bar along there. We've had lots of conversations about those, and that the floodway would be decreased. How, how are they impacted by these changes?
So those met, like, as mentioned, Commissioner Ormsby's question about how the notification process goes, I mean, they were published, these preliminary maps, they have different stages, and preliminary stage, I think was over two, almost two years, and they're published in the federal, federal register. So the developers and/or engineering staff from their consultants or who have you, they know these are out there, know where to look for them. When they can be used to say, I'm out of it, is not until now. They can look to the future and kind of plan for that, and, but until they become effective, and sometimes until, at this stage, they will, they're going to become effective, they're in the stage of now that we have to adopt. In that preliminary stage, there's been instances, even across the river in Illinois and in Iowa, where they show preliminary maps, they don't become adopted. So if you plan for something and you're on preliminary maps, it's not, it's a risk. But these are now pending issued. We've got the, the letter from FEMA to the mayor and city, so now it's just a matter of adoption.
So these, these maps will become the law of the land, so to speak, and if you are parcel owner and you have petitions coming before the city, you'll be able to use these maps to your advantage or disadvantage, as the case may be. For the most part, I think it's going to be to, the advantage of some of those petitions you've talked about, and I suspect they'll be coming forward with modified or new requests. In fact, we've been communicating with them, some of the ones you mentioned, that hey, the new maps are in the pipeline, you know, the feds put these out, we just have to accept them, and, and so they've become aware of that, and they're, they're either waiting in the wings or changing their requests based on how the map, the new map will look.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Anyone else? All right, then I need a motion and a second to approve case 23-092, please.
So move, I move to approve case 23-092, as written.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call on that motion, please?
Gibson.
Yes.
Kapler.
Yes.
Polcarney.
Yes.
Ormsby.
Yes.
Satterfield.
Yes.
Stoltenberg.
Yes.
Winland.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Now, is there proof of publication, Mark, for case 23-093?
Yes, sir, there is.
Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing for case 23-093 and ask if there's any public comment with regard to this case. Okay, I'm not seeing any. I will close the public hearing. And is there a discussion and questions regarding this case? Probably none, okay. Then I would ask for a motion and a second regarding case 23-093.
I'll move to approve case 023, excuse me, 23093, as written.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-093. Can we have the roll call on that, Mark?
Gibson.
Yes.
Kapler.
Yes.
Polcarney.
Yes.
Ormsby.
Yes.
Satterfield.
Yes.
Stoltenberg.
Yes.
Winland.
Yes. All right, thank you.
The next case, 23-034, has been deferred by the request of the applicant. It deferred to the January meeting, so I'll move on to case 2385.
Can I just pause you for a second there? Just in case any, you didn't hear that, the case for the James Young addition over off of Kimberly, that has been pulled by the developer and it's not being handled tonight. So just in case, and if you are here for that, it will not be taking place. Okay, sorry.
Until next month.
Potentially, yep. Stay tuned. All right, go ahead, Taylor.
All right. Our next case on the agenda is 23-087. This is a final plat, replat for Dougalby Second Edition. A little background on this case, this is located on 30th Street. The applicant is Scott Sweringer. The request is for a final plat of previously platted lots, the plat, I think, goes back to 1930s, maybe 20s. The proposal here really is to reconfigure two residential lots. They will both remain two single-family lots. Currently, the house, which is 804 30th Street, is actually, half of it is on the same lot as 806 30th Street. The consequences of this are it's non-conforming, this, you'll run into issues with financing, or we won't allow you to build anything else on the lot, garages, anything, permits. So this is really just getting this into conformance with our zoning code and subdivision. We don't allow two single-family homes on the same lot. As I mentioned, the subdivision is quite old, almost 100 years, and the houses are each built in 1930 as well. So both of, this plat just brings this into conformance. It's in a R2 single-family residence district, and the surrounding areas are similar, except there's a C3 way in the back, in the rear yard, general business property located in the west. Proposed plat shown, lot one and lot two. Lot one will have the 804 30th Street House and be smaller, and then the northern one, lot two, will have it contain the majority of the property. The proposed plat meets zoning bulk standards for the R2 district and meets all applicable subdivision ordinance requirements. The staff contends the proposed plat meets those requirements and is recommending approval of this case 23-087. I can take any questions.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since?
Nope.
Pretty straightforward. Questions or comments from the commission regarding to this case? All right, anyone in the audience would like to participate in this matter? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 23-087, subject to staff recommendations.
I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-087, final plat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 23-087 is recommended for approval. Okay, Taylor?
Thank you, Chairman. Our next case on the agenda is case 23-072. This is a site development plan, really a review of change of use for 3280 Middle Road. Some background, the applicant is Casey Moore. This is the former site of Bettendorf Office Products. The newer is demising or splitting units into the current structure. No external renovations are occurring, and has a new user and then potential unknown future users. Pet Supplies Plus will be occupying most of the structure, that's the identified user. So really what we're reviewing for this is any potential compatibility issues, some site plan issues, so think parking, there's really no exterior changes, so that's all we're looking at, the outside, just as a, some context. The current zoning is C2 community commercial district. The surrounding uses are similar. There is an R5, a high-density multifamily residence district to the west, that's Palmer Hills Court Condos. These are existing for a while. Pet Services is the defined use of the pet supply store, and it's a permitted use in the C2 district. Future tenants will be reviewed upon licensing or building permits as they're pulled, so businesses do have to pull business licenses to the city, and they also sometimes have to renovate for their new business, and staff reviews those for compliance with our zoning ordinance. The floor plan kind of gives you an idea of what's being changed right now. The Pet Supplies Plus store tenant will occupy 8,500 square feet of the building. The site contains 47 parking spaces and two ADA spaces. Based on our off-street parking schedule, pet stores have a actual defined use, and they require, I believe, one space for 500 square feet, so that's 17 spaces. So the remaining 3,700 square feet of space in the building can utilize those 30 parking spaces. It could be one user or multiple units, that is up to the owner, but that is the allocated number of parking spaces for the site. Like I mentioned, the change of use review does not limit the applicant to two units, but does set the parking parameters for the site. Other items include utilities, refus, thoroughfare plan, traffic circulation, pedestrian access, stormwater attention, and landscaping are unchanged and unaffected by the proposed change of use at the site. The staff contends the proposed development meets the site development standards and code requirements. Staff is recommending approval of case number 2372, site development plan for 3280 Middle Road. I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything else to add?
No, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Questions and comments from the commission with regard to this proposal?
I just had a question on the floor plan. So I was looking at it, I noticed that with the separation, there's no restrooms in the future tenant area.
So those, those, just like, the only identified user, when they submit those permits, that's an requirement for, that goes under our commercial review, the same type of review process for building permits. The same type of review process for a building permit would go under any new units. Right now, they're just.
So for the existing or for the future, Pet Supplies Plus, one you know is going in there, for that part that's being used, everything's set.
Everything else is.
To be handled later.
Yep. And it's coming from, remember, from Bettendorf Office Products, it's just one sole user. And how we, our change of use review for site plan, we kind of, we have like ten percent rules in our code or change of use. It's whether to allow it as just a building permit or does it meet the threshold to come to the commission and council? And we've gone through other change of use permit or change of use reviews in the past. Usually, I think all of them are mostly a multi-tenant commercial, but this is kind of unique that it was a single tenant or single use and now changed to multi-tenant.
The tangled was, if you remember, when the tangled, lots of their expansions, they had to come in and do successive site plans because of the growth they had and the changes they had. So we've, we had them.
I think Smash Pizza won't come, this comes to mind. They had some change, that was a change of use because there was an identified number of parking spaces and how is that going to fit into the other users there? And users can share, we go through this, another site plan reviews where if they're off setting hours, there's code that kind of directs us how to calculate those parking. Pet Supplies Plus, I believe, will be more of a, kind of an all-day endeavor. I don't know if there'll be some off-setting hour opportunities, unlike, say, a coffee shop and a bar. That's a common one. They're going to have off-setting hours. So all this comes into play when we're reviewing those. And that's why we're bringing it to you.
Okay, thanks.
So Taylor, one question I had was, were you done? Janessa? Yeah. The parking, so there's two ADA today. Does, does the proposed use with the pet operation require two or one?
It just, I believe they said one in the staff report and that was a typo, or R-two on site.
Yeah.
The number of ADA spots are, that comes from a table based on the number of allocated spots. So it has no, no, the use does not.
It's based off the total number of parking in the parking lot.
Okay, total for the building. So using, not using two of them now, that will leave none later. Okay, that, that addresses it. Good. Others from the commission with regard to this? No, anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Commissioner, I move to approve case twenty-three dash zero seven two, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
I'll third.
Okay, we're going to give that one to Scott. All right, Scott gets a second on that one. All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-three dash zero seven two, site development plan, change of use review. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Twenty-three zero seven two is recommended for approval. All right. Twenty-three zero six eight, we've got a personnel change here.
Mr. Chairman, the case we have here is twenty-eight three zero eight six, it's lot seven Cumberland Central Park, second edition. We've got two addresses we can use here, thirty-sixty or thirty-sixty-six Victoria Street. Location is right here, south of the high school and this will be part of the high school at some point. This educational facility will be replacing one that is currently on Sixteenth Street. The applicant is the Bettendorf Community School District and they intend to remodel and also build a, an addition here to provide ninety-seven hundred forty-five square feet total building. The future land use designation is urban medium intensity. We can see urban light intensity throughout the west and north area and then down here we see urban high intensity. The goal of, goal G meets goal G, comprehensive plan is to protect and maintain an educational system and enhancing that is part of that. And this structure will be housing educational programs for high schoolers. Zoning of the area is C-one predominantly here and at one time, this had been C-five office transitional, but you remember when we did the rewrite of the zoning ordinance in two thousand seventeen, we transitioned commercial properties of this office type nature to C-one neighborhood commercial district. And we have that surrounding here and we have R-one at the high school, we have R-two over here at the residential area to the west. This is the original site plan and this is the original office building. This was built in the late nineteen eighties. You still have the same means of access. The layout of the parking is still the same. The south boundary is considered to be the side lot. This is the true front yard for determining that the west boundary is in fact the rear lot line and this is an area here that both sides will have to, if in there, establish as front yard setbacks for the purposes of any building. And this is the plat that was done in nineteen eighty-two. This is the lot of record, as you can see, Maple Crest Road. And as it was noted here, it's called Victoria Drive, it's called Victoria Street now. I already mentioned the transitions from the C-five to the C-one zoning. This is the way the structure is intended to look. This is the addition that is proposed right here, attached to the original structure. The access will be from Victoria and this will be replacing a structure that is currently located at the former post office at forty-three eight Sixteenth Street. This is a provision here of what the structure will look like. There will be new treatment provided and this is the addition in the southwest portion of a lot of record. Utilities, water service, and there are two lines for water service coming into this building as per code. We have sanitary sewer coming in from the east also right here. We have fiber optic entering the building here and then we have electrical service coming here along the south property line up into the building. Structure here is that it's going to be excess, there will be no change in the means of entry and that essentially we have Maple Crest serving here as a collector to bring traffic in from Eighteenth Street for the circulation into the parcel. No sidewalks are being required to be replaced. However, there is a crosswalk that will be obligated to be placed here that will meet ADA standards so that in the future, when a special location plan has been approved, that students may park here in the high school parking lot and make their way toward this facility. That's something that will have to pass through the Board of Adjustment, that special location plan. The off-street parking is enough suited for some of the faculty that do operate in this building. But again, the special location plan shall be required to facilitate the number of students that may come into this particular structure. Go to the landscape plan, there'd be sixteen evergreen trees planted here. There was no buffer yard requirement when this building was constructed in the late eighties. There is now and staff require that these as a buffer yard mechanism be put in place. A lighting shall be required to be downcast on this site. Staff would recommend approving the site development plan with the following conditions. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything to add?
No, just a quick clarification. The special location plan, it's kind of a term of art from our code, but really it's an off-street parking plan. Off-street parking plans are approved by the Board of Adjustment, so your recommendation here would also be pending that subject for approval by the Board of Adjustment and then of course, it all goes to council after that.
How many sites or parking places are we talking about that'll be?
They haven't submitted it yet. I don't think it'll be all that many. As I understand the way the school operates, it's not an eight to, eight to three everyday school. Generally, it's students that are in an alternative education program. Some of them have jobs, some of them have school two or three days a week. So it's not like you're going to have buses and parents dropping kids off, you know, at seven forty-five to eight twenty and, and three to three thirty. It's going to operate a little bit differently. So I really don't see a problem with the parking.
Okay. And this is, I look at the aerial, he's got up now, the parking lot across the street is virtually full. There's a few spaces in it, but I know they're pretty well full. So it wouldn't be a large number of parking spaces over there you'd need. Okay. All right, good, thanks. Questions or comments other than those from the commission?
My pleasure.
Nope?
I do have a question. Greg, you talked about buffering trees. Is there a fence around this property or will there be a fence around the property?
There's a fence line, but made up of individual property owners on the single-family side and there is nothing here. We don't have a fence requirement for this and we are not going to require that as long as they do plant the vegetation shown here.
Okay.
You know, that's up to them, that's their option.
Right. It's, it's a different use of the building and different population in the building. So I think the landscaping and the fencing are probably useful to the neighbors. And then the pedestrian crossing, we won't have any lighting or flashing or any signaling there?
Not initially, so they will construct the crossing and we'll put up kind of our standard crosswalk signs. We'll evaluate whether the volumes would need the high intensity, the rapid flash beacons.
Okay.
Simply because those do come at a cost of nearly twenty thousand dollars for a set of them. So unless they're really truly on arterials or very high volume, Maple Crest obviously is high near the high school, but only about twenty-five hundred vehicles a day, so most likely would not warrant it.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have a question about the building aesthetics. Can you go back to the slide which shows some 3D views?
You want a slide for?
Yep. There you go. I mean, this is an existing building and then the new building has a huge contrast from what the existing building looks like. Is it going to be treated as two separate buildings? Is there any, any concern about what material is going to be used on the outside finish?
We really don't have any design standards for this area, so we can't really impose anything. It's something that the school system, Bettendorf School System would have to, you know, indicate what that material, how that treatment might be presented. I, I don't know per se that, I mean, we, we can't really charge and sell them, making of a certain material. I mean, they can offer up what that is, but we can't really buy them.
There are only two parts of town where we have the ability to control the aesthetic and those are downtown, our downtown overly district. And then that's our Utica or Utica Ridge overly district. So we don't have that control here. We can always have a conversation with our friends at the school district and say that was a concern that was raised by our commission. Perhaps they're on the fence on making final decisions anyway and it'd be a conversation I'd be happy to have.
Sounds good, thank you.
I think that's a really good point. You wouldn't necessarily need to change the materials, just change the colors to make it coordinate better with the existing building and it would be less conspicuous as two separate things, tie it together.
I mean, the white bands in the corner or in the middle of the building, don't know what that is, but then I don't know if that's really going to tie into the new building.
Right.
Just, just a comment.
The brick is the brick. You can't change that, but you could change the materials of the other part of the building to tie in with that a little better.
Okay. Anyone else from the commission? Nope. How about anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Okay, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case twenty-three dash zero eight six, subject to staff recommendations.
I second.
Okay, and Samir? We have a motion to approve and a second to approve case twenty-three dash zero eight six, site development plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Twenty-three dash zero eight six is recommended for approval. Okay, next one, Greg?
Mr. Chairman, our next case involves a final plat for an area that is north of Forest Grove Drive. It's going to be Forest Grove first edition and it is presented to us in the final platform. You've already seen the preliminary plat. To go through what has gone on, we've seen this transition out to an urban high-intensity district and that has taken and made this possible here that we go to a standard here, R-five and C-three. And that has recently transitioned from what was an A-one parcel, A-one zone. We can see that there's still A-one here, R-three to the south, C-seven and C-three here. That has facilitated what we will be talking about in the site development plan for this area here for high intensity, yeah, high intensity multifamily residence district zoning. We see three general business district, which is brought in with that most recent rezoning. This is the preliminary plat that has already been approved over a sixty-one point five three acre subdivision for this entirety. Right-of-way is being configured, so in the future is to accommodate more traffic through here in a potential roundabout at this point. This portion here of the right-of-way is being delayed for Competition Drive. And then the means of access at this point is International Drive to get to lot one, which we'll be discussing further here. Final plat shows that this area right now is not delineated for right-of-way for Competition Drive. However, there is a provision with the plat note that is here that if lots two, three and four ever require, or I should say, request a development of any type, that this right-of-way be put in place and that all utilities and any other right-of-way that were shown on the preliminary plat also be put in place as needed. Right now, the plat is being set up to accommodate International Drive to serve this area. There's a potential two for a secondary access if required by our fire department to serve lot one. Competition Drive here is widened enough to accommodate three lanes for traffic. And then we have all these other infrastructure requirements that there will be an agreement as part of this proposal and also the site development plan to look at the staging and then the obligations of all parties placing infrastructure within this subdivision. Utility connections for storm, for sanitary sewer and water supply will come up along the right-of-way of International Drive. And the sanitary sewer will be brought up and then there will be a connection point that will be north of Forest Grove Drive and that is also in the works right now. Pedestrian trail and access essentially, for any of this in the future, you'll have five feet sidewalks either side of International and then you'll have a continuation of the rec trail from parts due east for this particular subdivision. Outlots A and B will serve as stormwater detention for this particular lot of record. They total one point six nine and two point eleven acres. Other detention as needed will be provided as staff sees the need on other lots of record. Staff would recommend approval of this final plat as it meets goal C to attract and retain business and industry and goal D to provide housing options and reinvest in existing neighborhoods. And as it says in condition two, an agreement will be required that addresses the sequence of construction for International Drive to access the multifamily project and the adjacent road and sewer work to serve it. This agreement will tie milestone building inspections to completion of those items, including secondary fire access. That being said, I would recommend approval, staff does, for this project. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I would like to abstain from this case.
Abstained, so noted. Samir's going to abstain. Mark, anything additional?
No, nothing to add, just a, a kind of a clarity. The next case is also relative to this as well, so maybe some of the questions might come up in the next case.
Okay. All right, questions or comments in this regard for this case from the commission? No? Anyone in the audience with regard to this case? You guys have got me really confused now. You've all been back there and nobody's said anything yet, but, okay. All right, back to the commission then.
Well, we have two cases here, so I will make a motion to approve case twenty-three dash zero eight eight, the final plat for west of forty-eight fifty Competition Drive and north of Forest Grove Road, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-three dash zero eight eight, final plat, Forest Grove Landing first edition. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Pose, same sign. Okay, twenty-three dash zero eight eight is recommended for a. Opposed, same sign. Okay, 23-088 is recommended for approval.
And we are also considering case 23-089, the site development plan for proposed Lot 1.
Greg, did you have anything additional to present on that?
This is 23-89 right here.
So we have another presentation for that Greg?
Right here.
Okay, sorry, I guess I was ready to go home.
Okay.
You said, Mark said two cases, so I'm just like, okay, let's knock it out.
Didn't have to ask her twice, okay.
Just trying to help you Greg.
Where this particular project is outlined in this blue right here. And the Africanist Continental 750 Fund LLC, you remember that they've done another project, Springs, which is just due south of 53rd Avenue and due east of Devil's Glen Road. Area surrounding again, I've already gone through this before. You've seen that it's been transitioned into urban, you know, high-intensity. And then we've got the same zoning scheme that just recently occurred. This is the R5 portion where this structure is anticipated. And again, we've seen that 15-point acres, 15.8 acres of this particular area here. This is where we're looking out of 61.53 acres total is being consumed by this project either as outlots or as developable area. And this again is Lot Number 1 as shown on the final plat. What we have are essentially eight buildings on 12 acres. And then three-point acres, eight acres of outlots that are straddling the south and the north portions of the lot that is going to house these buildings. The requirement here for density is 1,500 square feet of land space for each particular apartment unit. Petitioners provided 1,812 square feet of land space for each one of these units. So they've met that requirement. There are 288 units to be built in eight three-story buildings with this particular project. There'll be four types of apartments that are going to be placed within these structures. And each of these, we have 12 apartments on each floor of the three-floor, three-story structures. We have eight apartment buildings times 36 units to give us 288 total units. There's a clubhouse, there's a maintenance building also included with covered garages. And then we have a dog run area and swimming pool as well. Duralfer and access will be accommodated by International Drive and you'll have a means of entry coming in here. There will be a secondary access potentially required again per the fire department. We also have utility connections, again as I mentioned earlier, that will be coming up here, water and sanitary sewer to connect to this site. And we have a pedestrian trail, I guess if you will, via sidewalk, five feet both, on both sides of International Drive. And then we have that connecting, of course, to Forest Grove Drive to that rec trail below on the south. And given the size and the number of apartments, they're broken down in such a manner that an apartment below 800 square feet requires one and a half spaces. Apartment above 800 square feet requires two spaces. Come up with a total that was 504 and that is the amount that the petitioners provided. There'll be 11 handicap spaces also on site. They'll have to meet all ADA requirements. And the covered garages and the open space parking make up this total. And then we go again, we have the outlots here for the stormwater detention on the south and the north sides. Tree count was met with 26 trees within the vehicular use area and 13 that were required to be provided along the streetscape area. Again, all the trees will have to be kept out of easement areas. And then all the lighting for this project shall be downcast as required. Again, staff recommends approval of the site development plan because it does meet with Goal D, providing housing options and also reinvesting in existing neighborhoods. And again, that requirement again of this agreement, staging in certain aspects and requiring parties to acknowledge their responsibilities in building the infrastructure for this project, that is also a condition with this particular site development plan. Staff recommends approval with the conditions listed in the report. I would ask, are there any questions?
All right, thank you Greg, appreciate it. Mark, anything else to add?
Nope, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Questions and comments from the Commission on this matter, please? I've got, I've got a couple. The trash enclosure that I see close to the one entrance, is that the only trash area? Is it gonna be centralized?
I don't, it's actually like a compactor, I think. And the representatives for this proposal are here tonight, they can better address that as well.
Just trying to get a feel for, you know, is somebody in the far, get my bearing here, southwest building, gonna have to come all the way over to the trash compactor to get a feel how that's gonna work from a practical standpoint. And then I know we don't have it in our code, but I see all these units and I'm wondering, are they providing any, or they're planning on providing any onsite electrical charging capacity for tenants potentially? So those would be two I've got whenever somebody comes up. Okay. We're gonna put you on that one back there. This one up here costs a lot more.
I'm Michelle Johnson, I'm the representative of Continental Properties. To touch on the trash, that is correct, it is a trash compactor. And similar to our Springs apartment, Springs at Bettendorf, we also have a valet trash service that comes around weekly to the different apartment buildings to pick up trash left out by the residents in bins. As well as then residents have the ability to deliver their own trash to this compactor, which has access to them at any time.
So each resident in each building has their own can as well that can be? Great.
That is then collected on a weekly basis.
Yeah, that's nice.
And then the electric charging station. I don't believe at this time we were showing anything, but that is something that we've implemented at many other communities, so we could look to implement that as well.
Yeah, just one of those things that's coming and maybe not as fast as everybody wanted it or some people wanted it to, but it's coming. I know there's some chargers down by the TBK, but I just think from a marketing and product offering standpoint, it would be advantageous to have that.
Where would that go?
Well, I don't know, you know, maybe you'd have to designate a few. It looks like you got a couple of garages in there too, right?
Yeah, and we've had, I'd have to look at the exact specs, but we've had infrastructure to add that to the stalls and they don't need to be enclosed. So that could just be in addition that we add to as some designated spots.
And just so the Commission knows, that EV charging parking as a matter of code is something we're contemplating in the next code update. There's actually a lot that goes to it. I've been working with the fire chief to understand there are some fire risks with EV vehicles. The vehicles themselves, not so much the charging stations. So where you have those parked is something we wanna think a lot about. Not necessarily in this setting, but like a parking garage or something like that. So we're giving that a lot of thought. It's not something we can dictate now, but we certainly understand the Commission's concern.
Once they start on fire, they don't like to go out, do they? Yeah. Okay, anyone else with the Commission questions?
Are there garages on here?
Yeah, I think there's two, HG, right kinda?
One, two, three.
Two.
Three.
Oh, yeah, I see.
This is a maintenance area here, I believe, maintenance area.
And I'll just say in general, that Springs has a great feel to it. It's open, it's airy, you don't feel congested, it's got great curb appeal. So to the extent it follows that pattern, bless you, I think you've done a great job with that. It's a nice-looking development in our community. Okay, anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope, we'll come back to the Commission.
Should I try again?
Go for it this time, you're green to go.
Mr. Chairman, I will move for approval of case 23-089, the site development plan for proposed Lot 1, Outlot A, B, Forest Grove Landing, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-089, site development plan, Forest Grove Landing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 23-089 is recommended for approval. Which brings us to our last case, Greg.
Mr. Chairman, this is a replat of a ground that was originally part of, it was Lot 2 of Harts Fifth Edition. Essentially, what you've got is this lot here. And the petitioner would like to split it so that this car wash in this retail area can be split up. The area is pretty much community commercial all in this spot. And then urban medium intensity, and then you have public semi-public over here with the retirement area, housing in this area. And it's pretty much C3 and then C2 over here. As we get over to the west side, this is all PUD and this is actually a PR5 overlay district right here, UV2 right here, but you see 2 surrounding the majority of this. This is what, this plat here best demonstrates what this looks like. Harts Fifth Edition, all you see on the plat is something that doesn't really detail what has happened here. There is an access easement right here that is an odd part of this. And also there are other easements running through this parcel that we're not showing on Harts Fifth Edition. And that's why this plat here is being presented to show what is here on site at this time. Lot 2, Harts Fifth Edition is being platted. And one of the conditions that we saw, that we, only one a matter of fact that came with this report is that reference to this area here is Outlot A, this not be included in this title block and it's in here. Only area being replatted is here. No part of this detention basin is a portion of that replat. What this area is currently, that will not change in any boundaries per se, is just simply subdividing this into two usable lots for the respective different uses. There'll still be two access points, there'll still be this easement that does allow circulation within the lot between what will be the future two lots. Utility connections are already in and they are not gonna change in any way on, for either one of these two buildings. There's also the recreational trail out front. Pedestrians may enter into this at any point to the location with, by going in through the drive areas. There's also Outlot A that is being maintained for this area as well as others. And then there's a detention basin out front for this particular subdivision. Staff in reviewing this proposal, only is that one condition to remove any reference of Outlot A in the title block on the final plat. And we would recommend approval of this subdivision. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you Greg, appreciate it. Mark, anything to add? No?
Stay forward.
All right. Questions and comments from the Commission, please? On the, on the overhead mark with the aerial, can you just roughly line in? Is it, is it basically the split, is it gonna be, leave a drive on the?
Yeah, right here. This is where that boundary is going to occur.
And, and is there any intention to have any kind of cross-easement area over there? Or is it just, there're gonna be?
You mean here?
No, on the?
Here, there's already cross-easement.
Between the car wash and the building right there, because people drive in, Roy drives in to go get his pizza on Tuesday and comes around the back to get to the pizza place, some come in from the other. But people do come around both sides of the building. Will there be access remaining when the lot is split?
This is the current access easement right here and then, I mean, they, it's staged in for what it is right now on.
That's in the front, yeah, so there won't?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'll give a condition added.
You can do that if you feel it's necessary.
Yeah, because the practical matter, they need to have.
I don't know if there's really access, or maybe just a, it may just be clear to do a shared parking.
Something there, because if you were to put a prop, a fence on your property line there, it wouldn't be a functional site anymore.
There's also a meeting you have to remember too that is in this area. And there's a drive that is right here and that there's a separation that somewhat occurs, so it is not exactly a hospitable situation.
Okay, I didn't remember there was a curb there, but, yeah, okay.
So while you have this up, can you show us where Outlot A is from this picture?
Right here.
Okay.
And you can see this is a regional feed in. And that's also the obligations too for this subdivision to contribute whatever they need to for the maintenance of this outlot is a part of this.
So is Outlot A part of this plat?
It is not.
Okay.
That was proposed.
So that's why you wanna take the reference?
That was a condition, it just got left in inadvertently in the title block.
All right, that makes sense.
Yep.
Who does Outlot A belong to?
To the homeowners, or the Business Owner Association to the east. So it was built when Aldi was constructed and that road extension of Middle Drive was put in.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
By the way, the lights are out on Middle Drive back there, the streetlights.
Better call them American.
Do I call?
It's your job.
You're all those.
Lights are up, all right.
On Tuesdays, maybe they're just out on Tuesdays.
No, they've been out all week and, yeah. All right. Anyone in the audience with regard to this? Did I ask them already? I don't remember. All right, any further comments in the Commission? I'll take a motion if not.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-090, subject to staff recommendations.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-090, Town Point Center second edition replat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 23-090 is recommended for approval, which would take us to Commission update.
By my count, you have now finished your 14th meeting of the year. Thank you for your service.
Do we get overtime for that since we did two?
These guys.
14 meetings, she had 12 regular meetings, she had a special meeting for a case, she had a special meeting for the comprehensive plan. You've done a lot of work and we really appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark and staff. I think it's been a great year. We've had some interesting challenges that we've gone through, but great support from you guys as well, all the city staff and everything. So Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and everything in between. So we'll see you next year. And with that, we are adjourned.